Blackberry? Yep.
Let me go.
A meeting to order, the Praise for the Fledge of Legions.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move on. Welcome, everyone. Let's move on to item three, items from the public, and first up is Cheryl Hayward from Timberland Regional Library, which will be directly to wherever you prefer. I brought copies.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, council members, to present to you some of the highlights from 2022 and some of the major initiatives that we're working on in 2023. As you know, Timberland Mutual Library served 550,000 people across 7,000 square miles with 245 staff and 29 libraries and one headquarters. We serve Pacific County, we serve Lewis, Grace Harbor, Mason, and Thurston counties. Honey Whip, who just entered, is a member of our Order Trust lead representing Pacific County, and she is serving a seven-year term, and you know Jenny Tenoyer, she is the library manager for South Bend and for Maria. Here is a copy of the annual report that we are regularly required by each year, and a copy is also available at trl.org. And I do apologize for getting over your pretty back pole. I'm on the tail end of it, so you're not contagious. I'm not contagious. Okay, so here are the highlights for 2022, and it's based on the public's input with us in the fall of 2019. And we are, based on their input, common themes arose across the five counties. And the three folk guides are focusing on local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities, partnering with agencies to support diverse communities and empowering children convert to five, clarifying what they need and how to provide for those needs. So we call this a strategic direction. It goes from 2020 to 2024. So some of the highlights from 2022 include new open hours across the library, including South Bend, and for the first time, it's open on Mondays in South Bend, many years. And so it's the only library between the two here that are open on Mondays. So it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 10 to 5. And then I'll start off right away with the statistics so that you know how well we are doing with how they're using the library. There was an increase of 0.16% of physical checkouts from 2021 to 2022. So that was from 19,149 checked out in '21 to 19,141 checked out in 2022. Just to give you another number, in 2018, before the pandemic, the physical checkouts were 23,331. So we have a little bit of weight to go to build that up. Overdrive is our downloadable ebooks, e-audio books, and you have access to over 4,300 e-magazines from around the world, including North America. That increased by 2% from 2021 to 2022. So that went up to 5,242 checkouts for downloadables. And in 2019, that was 3,802. So that trend, physical versus downloadable, is what we see across the district, but we also see that across the nation. So we're not, we're not a anomaly. There are 2,007 active patrons in South Bend, obviously more than population, but that's because you're giving, we're giving out cards with the people who are outside the city. Last year, the Summer Library Program, just like this year, is running June 1st to August 31st. Last year, we had 652 programs and 9,603 people attended those programs. I haven't counted the programs during the summers. I don't know. But I'm sure there's hundreds and hundreds of programs that you can go and learn more about at trl.org. Last summer, people got to walk along 15 story trails, and the story trails are deconstructed picture books based on environmental theme for families to walk on trails and so on. So we are partnering with ports and hospitals and US Forest Service and, I mean, a whole variety of different partners. And you can go to trl.org to find out the story trails this year. In addition to the Summer Library Program that is open for all right now, June 1st to August 31st, we have a library card contest going on from June 1st to July 15th. And that is for children 18 years of age and under. There'll be three winners. We'll select those winners, and we'll make them into library cards in time for the library card sign-ups. Okay, so also last year, we introduced Grow a Reader, which is an early literacy activity, of course, because we're focused on birth to five. And so this is a physical memento for the parents regarding to sign, write down the favorite books of the child as the child grows up. So it's called Grow a Reader. It's available in English and Spanish. And we have our, our local artists who have done the artwork for the memento. We introduced iPads in all of our libraries for people to use in-house library rooms only to access all of our online resources. We expanded our library of things. So in addition to all the books and all the magazines and newspapers and DVDs and so on, we also have a library of things. So last year, we expanded with new stargazing kits, new kitchen tools to check out, new plankton kits with microscopes, thanks to the Pacific Shellfish Institute. Most of these kits are donated from our partners, so we're not putting money necessarily into them. And early math packs. So we got a $7,000 grant from the Capital Stan Alliance, which focuses on birth at 29 in the five county region on Stan-related education and career pathways and family wage careers. So they gave us $7,000, and we created these early math packs for ages 3 through 8, and they're so popular that we are hopefully getting more money from them to get one out this year. We also added additional fishing kits and checkout Washington kits. And thanks to the Washington State Health Foundation, we received multiple Discover passes that we're able to put into these kits. So these kits are, all we have to do is Google "library of things trl," and you'll get to that page of all the library things and how to get access to them. So last September, library card signup month, we issued 5,123 new library cards, and we have six new library card designs. And as I just mentioned, there's a library card design contest running now. Last year, we also opened up our 29th library, which is a demonstration library, which means that we're demonstrating to our board, to the staff, to the public, for the need for it. And this one is in Hops Prairie and Lacy. And it's also a lucky day library because you don't have to wait and be 400 on the waiting list for a popular bestselling either. All the titles in that particular type of library are bestsellers for all ages. We also opened up on Sundays at the West Olive Kitchen Rowland Library in Castle Mall. And the reason also that I mentioned this and we doubled the size of that one, we signed it to 2,500 square feet, is because we are seeing people from all the five counties go to that, to that one. And it's, it's, it's so popular, it's like 979 right donations of physical stimulation. So the city of Olympia is extending the lease there for another two years. Okay, so extended access hours. This is where you're 14 years of age and up and older. You request a key card if you have a library card in good standing. And then with this key card, you can access the library from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily, including Sundays and holidays, even when the staff are not there. So many of our libraries are going from 20 to 30 hours a week to 91 hours a week. So it's Pacific County, and it's the same hours everywhere, and it's the same key card. So that you can get in to El Waco, starting on Saturday, to Ocean Park. And today's sale right now, three other five libraries in Pacific County have extended access hours with the AH. Putzport, Packwood, and Tenino on Thursday. They're going live, and McCreary and Elma are live right now. So we have about nine libraries. We've invested close to a million dollars into the technology to be able to do this so that the public, who are our super-users, can get access to these libraries when the staff are not there. So obviously, we have cameras. We're very aware of the safety issues. We have a very robust internal protocols when it comes to disruptive and egregious behavior, so we address it. But I can tell you, it's like really minimal in terms of, these are our super-users. They love having access to the libraries on their own terms, at their own time, to do what they need to do. So they're applying for jobs. They're coming in as a teacher to get classroom materials. They're doing whatever they want to do. They love it. So we're really pleased that, well, we're not so pleased that it took many years to get here. I mean, we were hoping we could do this all in one year, but it's been a three-year process so far. So that's expanded access hours. And again, the key card is good in all the libraries I just mentioned, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. Last year, we welcomed 53,408 new patrons and 12,001 new overdrive patrons. We answered 3,443 emails last year from the public. We can ask all sorts of questions. And we live chatted. We're one of the key libraries that's moved in the state that still live chat 9 to 5 Monday to Saturday. So when you go to trl.org and you have a little, you know, box that pops up and says, can I be of help to you? There's two people in line that box every hour to ask, to answer any of your questions. Okay, so 2023 highlights. The Waco Library is going on right now, a major refresh that the link has been closed since April 1st. It's opening up this, at the team. We're super excited. Timberland, this is a city-owned building. We're putting money, as Timberland Regional Library, into this library to make it work, just like we did $125,000 worth of work at the Raymond Timberland Library in 2020, because otherwise, that library would have been closed due to health and safety. Anywhere Library. So Anywhere Library is mobile services. We're going back to the past, but go into the future. And so mobile libraries, we're calling it Anywhere Library, it's based on the term, the staff came up with the name. We had a contest, and the staff came up with this one. But Anywhere Library will be by the end of next year, in the first quarter, will be up and running in all the five counties. Right now, it's running, and it's going to start this next week in Thurston. And we want to do one county really, really well before we go out and do the other four counties. What the vision is, is to reach people who are the furthest from us in terms of experience. So they cannot get to us because of transportation, gas, their homeland, I mean, whatever it's going to be. So we're going to go to them. And so we are identifying 14 to 32 sites per county. So if we're up and running at 32 sites per county times five, that's 160 places that we're going to go to that people, and that, and we compare that to 29 libraries. So we're really, really excited to be able to reach people because we know we're not reaching people. When we do a heat map of library card holders across the five counties, what we see are all card holders around the states, and it's blackout in terms of the accounts. And so what we're trying to do is to reach the small unincorporated towns and reach the organizations that are going out there. And people are watching, like institutions are watching, because they want to piggyback with us to come out. So I have a feeling it's going to be a long parade eventually with different, it's different organizations coming out with us. So that's Anywhere Library, kicks off next week at the Senior Community Center in Ranier. And it'll be for Thursday, 21st. We also just expanded our library mail-out program, known as Books by Mail. So we are expanding it to anybody who has a physical disability, who cannot get to the library. And so we're very excited to start that new service. We have a new website coming up October 30th, and I know you think it's just a regular website, but this is like a top product for us because it's a public library product that is tied to the library catalog, which means that your searching for things will be a lot, for items, will be a lot easier. Think about it as seamless, right? So we're very excited about that. That's going to be October 30th. All libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system. Personally, I've been appointed by the county commissioners to serve on the Park Mountain Board, which is the local workforce development council. And I oversee the One Stop Committee, which is the local work source that's going on in five counties. And then we are partnering with Pacific County, Pacific, sorry, Grace Harbor United Way, that's overseeing Pacific and Grace Harbor Counties for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So I don't have specific numbers for you tonight specifically for Pacific County, but I can tell you is that 27% of the eligible children in Grace Harbor and Pacific County are now enrolled. That's 1,277 children. So 27% would like to get the word out to other birthed five children, right? To sign up to have regarded or parent sign them up for free books until they turn five. That's 60 books for the under born and when they turn five. So if you can spread that word, that would be awesome. And then as always, I would like to end on a quote that is very relevant to the times we're living in in terms of costs. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than money will get you through times of no records. Thank you again for the opportunity. Always a pleasure to work with you there. And a different, a whole bunch of different things. Wanted to let you know, we are, we know that the city of South Bend has received the library capital improvement program funds, or you will be getting it. You may approve on that list.
Yes.
And that our board has approved about 150, 140, 100, I have to go back and look at the minute. But once you receive those funds for the front stairs of the library, then, and if we can get a copy of that letter, and then we will, we will, we will request that the board release the funds from our building fund, which is a special purpose fund. And then when I check, we're going to send it to you for, for that.
Yeah, that's going to be an amazing thing. It's awesome.
It is.
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions for Cheryl?
You're busy.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I worry that Anywhere Library is kind of fascinating. What is that in take? I mean, what's in that?
Yeah.
How does that work?
Well, it's so, that's a great question. So first, we were going to do like one of these big trucks for like $850,000, and our board had approved that. And it was going to be all decked out with mobile lab, computer lab, and, you know, all sorts of things, right? But then this was like, think about this as like in 2021, 2020. And we put in the $300,000 down on this truck, and then the company was like starting to let other, other libraries like, no, we can't, we can't need your name, we can't need, but they were starting to cancel. And we were like, we were going, well, if we made another year to when they tell us it's going to be ready, and then another year, they're going to tell us to cancel, then we're going to be canceled now. So we canceled, and then we pivoted to smaller trucks. So each county is going to have a small truck. So you can't go on the truck, but what we're going to do is take everything out of it and bring it into the location that we're at. So we could be at senior posts, we could be at head starts, we could be at mobile home parks. We could be, you know, it's just a whole list, right? And we're asking the public to also work with us to identify things as well. So in the trucks, it'll be our internet, and it goes all, I'm not, I'm not a 19 person, but what I do know is that it goes all the way back to our headquarters. Because all of our internet, all of our 29 building things, they all go back to our headquarters before it goes out to the internet. And we do not use what everybody else uses. We use a company called Fatbeam for our internet. We are super pleased with them, but they work with colleges and public institutions. So, and they're the ones, their sister company at Medics is the one, they do safety and security at universities and colleges. They're the ones who use their technology to get us this stuff at the expanded access hours. So in the trucks, you have obviously a hotspot, you're going to have a mobile printer, you're going to hopefully have some laptops to check out, to use there, materials that we're going to bring for people to check out. I know that we ordered five trucks. I know all five have come in. I know that one of them right now is being spent off to be retrofitted. We wanted to do one at the beginning because, again, we want to make sure it's done right before we send it out to four, and it's very expensive to get it retrofitted. So, but they're small banks, and they say Anywhere Library on them. And we're super stoked because this is like when, when we meet with people across, Toni, Toni is like, Toni grew up and like raised our little county, and, and like she was a mobile services, Timberland Mobile Services child. And so she remembers the impact of that. And so to be able to reach kids, and it felt like, I just gave a presentation to 149 and, and the, and the people there. And they, one of them shared that when they were children, their mother would put them in a wheelbarrow to walk them over to mobile service then, to get the mobile services, you know, to get the folks to go. So we're not reaching 110 unincorporated towns. Neither the people who voted for Timberland in 1968, the people who live in the unincorporated region. The cities annexed, so all the cities now that we have, they're annexed. That means people voted to join us in tax, right? But the initial inter-county rural library district was formed by the people who are the people who are unincorporated areas. I guess I'm a very busy.
I was a Book Montiel kid too. Yeah, I loved it. Absolutely. It was the greatest day ever two weeks when that book Montiel came out. Yeah, I checked out the maximum amount of books I could get.
I'm based out of Raymond, and I'm going to be the manager of it. So if you have ideas or suggestions for places that you would like to stop, please let me know because we're working on completing this. Places to take it and contacts and making the connections so that we can get our van sometime next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very, a great presentation.
Are you sure it was because I saw it on TV?
Oh, yeah. All right, so let's move on to item number, oh, we still have items from the public. I'm sorry, I missed one. We have Bethany Barnard would like to speak. Go ahead, Bethany.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity, council members and mayor. My name is Bethany Barnard, and my traditional name is Tutsaline Mox. I'm a citizen of the Chinook Indian Nation, and here today is the co-executive director of Pacific County Voices Unite. I also live within the boundaries of the city of South Bend. I am here to encourage the city of South Bend to be more inclusive with their practices and be more reflective of our entire community. We know inclusivity matters for a variety of reasons. It matters when we think of representation, of how leaders from all different demographics need to be seen by their community. This is why we have months where we recognize specific identities, races, cultures, and disabilities and abilities. I am here tonight in support of the city of South Bend proclaiming June as Pride Month and hanging a pride flag outside of City Hall. From an indigenous perspective, Two-Spirit people are our traditional knowledge keepers and medicine people. They hold the highest statues in, within our communities. It is also important that we make sure our LGBTQIA Two-Spirit plus youth feel seen, supported, and cared for. This benefits everyone's behavioral health. Parents feel like they are supporting the health and well-being of their children as well as their own. The pride flag is a physical representation of this support and is a step towards building a more inclusive representation. It is crucial to send this message to our community members as it creates a sense of safety and celebration for all people. This will allow South Bend to support the growth and development for our community while ensuring it is a vibrant, safe, and diverse place to live. Hi, I'm A.C. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Bob Hall, items from the public.
Well, of course, I zoomed in here to listen to Cheryl, but, and that's all I was going to do. But, you know, I've often been irritated when I go by the recycled containers and see the piles of garbage bags, usually semi-hidden in the back. But today, we have two sets of mattresses and box springs, so a total of four, sitting there between the recycled containers, and it looks like there's some distorted wood furniture. It's, I wish we could, you know, they have the sign, you can't leave stuff, but people leave it all the time. That was all. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, the county is aware. They're the ones that oversee that program. So, all right, anything else from the public tonight? All right, so let's move on to item four. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda, agenda and the minutes from May 22nd, 2023.
Don't move. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to correspondence. We have several items tonight. The first one is to South Bend Municipal Court. And I asked Lisa, our court clerk, to draw this up. She's worked really hard to get these funds, and so this is a summary of what she's done. In April 2023, Washington State legislation passed ESSB 5187. That states the courts are mandated mandated to vacate any state versus Blake related cases, which are cases involving possession of marijuana and/or paraphernalia and potentially refund any monies received by the courts from defendants going back to 1971. Administrative Office of the Court has procured funding from the state of Washington to help offset the costs to courts. South Bend Municipal Court has been allocated $234,281 to comply with the new legislation. These funds will be applied to costs incurred by the court to meet compliance for Blake-related cases. The court has entered into a contract with Administrative Office of the Court that states this funding will go into trust, and AOC will disperse funds, meaning the court said you will not have to provide monies for this project. The city should, however, receive reimbursement for our contract costs concerning our judge, prosecutor, and public defense council expenses. And this, well, she didn't say it in here, this was a Herculean effort by Lisa. It took a lot of work to get these monies. And it's going to take a lot of work to get these cases cleared back from 1971 dealt with. So anyway, I asked her to put that out for the council tonight. And then the second item we have is a certificate of recognition, of recognition or appreciation awarded to the city of South Bend in appreciation of your dedication, collaboration, and teamwork during the COVID-19 pandemic. Your efforts have made a positive impact on the health and well-being of the citizens of Pacific County, and signed by the three county commissioners. So, let's see that. Anyway, that's the second item. All right, the third item, these, I've got two more letters here that came in after the agenda was published. And so they are not listed, but I will read them. And in preface to the first one, it began with a text message to Zoe from Chad Jones. Says, hey, Zoe, I'm not sure if the city of South Bend has a pride flag, but I would be willing to donate one for three if the city would buy it in support of pride at minimum pride weekend, the last weekend of June. And Zoe replied, I can check with the mayor, but I believe it would have to go before council. I can get back to you when she gets back from lunch. And Chad replies, I assumed, I just want our town to show support for all. Let me know if I need to come to council meeting on Monday. I'll be happy to be there. And Zoe responded, okay, I'll let you know what she says. And then she responds, I spoke with the mayor. This was at about 2:30 in the afternoon. I spoke with the mayor, and our practice has always been to just fly the American flag. And Chad responded, that's disappointing. Sorry, Zoe responded. And, and it goes on, but that's the part, and the only reason I dropped this up is because it is referenced in the letter that I'm going to read now from Chad Jones. Dear council members and Mayor Struck, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to you as Chad Jones, the owner of Create Tech Consulting Services and a concerned resident just outside of South Bend. Having provided website and email services to the city since 2010, I have developed a vested interest in the betterment of our community. Today, I bring forward a matter of utmost importance to me, the need for inclusive support of the LGBTQ plus community in our city. Firstly, I would like to express my disappointment regarding the response I received from Mayor Struck concerning the possibility of flying a pride flag in South Bend. As a representative of our city, it is crucial to ensure that all community members feel acknowledged, respected, and supported. While it is understandable that the American flag holds great significance, it is equally essential to demonstrate inclusivity and celebrate the diversity that enriches our community. I am aware that in the past, the city has flown the POW flag alongside the American flag. This decision reflects a recognition of the sacrifice made by our brave prisoners of war and honors their service to our nation. Similarly, supporting the LGBTQ plus community is a way to acknowledge and embrace our fellow residents who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, or members of other sexual or gender minority groups. The need for support and acceptance of the LGBTQ plus community is particularly crucial in small towns like ours. Here are some additional reasons why South Bend should actively demonstrate support for the LGBTQ plus community. One, enhancing community well-being. By openly supporting the LGBTQ plus community, South Bend can foster a sense of belonging and acceptance. This inclusivity promotes overall well-being and mental health, reducing the isolation and discrimination often faced by sexual and gender minorities. Two, economic benefits. Inclusive policies have been shown to attract businesses and talented individuals to prioritize diversity and inclusivity. By creating an environment that celebrates diversity, South Bend can stimulate economic growth and improve the city's long-term prospects. Three, retaining and attracting residents. Many individuals, particularly young people, seek out communities that align with their values of inclusivity and acceptance. By visibly supporting the LGBTQ-plus community, South Bend can retain current residents and attract new ones, thereby enriching our population and ensuring a vibrant future. Four, educational opportunities. Demonstrating support for the LGBTQ-plus community presents an opportunity to educate and foster understanding among residents. By promoting inclusivity, we can create a more informed and empathetic society, thereby reducing discrimination and promoting equality. I believe that South Bend has the potential to become a shining example of inclusivity and acceptancy in our region. By flying a pride flag alongside the American flag, we can send a powerful message of support to all our residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. This simple act of inclusion can make a significant difference in the lives of LGBTQ-plus individuals, fostering a sense of belonging and pride in our community. However, due to the lack of support from Mayor Struck in this matter, I regretfully inform you that Create Tech Consulting Services will be terminating its contract with the city at the end of this month. As a company committed to diversity, equality, and inclusivity, we believe it is necessary to align ourselves with partners who share these values. It is with a heavy heart that we take this step, but we believe it is essential to take a principled stand for the LGBTQ-plus community and their rightful inclusion in our community. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to hearing your thoughts and actions on this important issue. Sincerely, Chad Jones. And then we have one other, um, letter as well. And this is from Jovan Vaughn, he's the director of the Willha Harbor Chamber of Commerce. And before I read his, I did call and speak with him about this letter, asking who it was from. Uh, I do sit on the chamber board and it is on Willha Harbor Chamber of Commerce letterhead, and I do know that this did not come before the full board. Um, he didn't bring it to us to pass, to present this. And he said this letter was not to represent the board that actually represents the LGBTQ-plus members of the chamber who came to him and asked him to write the letter. So it's part of the, the larger, um, chamber membership, but not the chamber board, so. Dear Mayor and City of South Bend Council Members, we hope this letter finds you in good health and high spirits. We are writing to respectfully request the city council of South Bend to join the federal, state, and county government in raising the LGBTQIA pride flag specifically during the weekend of June twenty-third to June twenty-fifth in support of Pacific County pride. By displaying the pride flag, the city of South Bend can demonstrate its commitment to inclusivity, equality, and support for the LGBTQIA community. The month of June is recognized worldwide as Pride Month, commemorating the historic Stonewall riots that took place in June nineteen sixty-nine, marking a significant milestone in the fight for LGBTQIA rights and liberation. Raising the pride flag is a symbolic gesture that acknowledges and celebrates the diversity of our community, fostering a sense of acceptance and belonging for all residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. By displaying the pride flag, the city council would send a strong message of support to LGBTQIA individuals, promoting a safe and inclusive environment where everyone is free to express themselves authentically. This act would also align South Bend with other cities across the country and around the world that have recognized the importance of recognizing and celebrating Pride Month. Furthermore, the presence of the pride flag would serve as a positive representation for visitors and potential investors, highlighting South Bend as a progressive and forward-thinking city that values diversity and promotes inclusivity. It can enhance the city's reputation as an inclusive and welcoming community, attracting individuals, businesses, and organizations that prioritize equality and respect for all. We understand that there may be logistical considerations and guidelines to adhere to when displaying flags. However, we believe the city council can work collaboratively collaboratively with relative, relevant departments and organizations defined in appropriate location and ensure that the necessary arrangements are made to raise the pride flag safely and respectfully. We kindly request the city council's careful consideration of this proposal and the initiation of the necessary steps to raise the LGBTQIA pride flag from June twenty-third to June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Your support would not only send a powerful message of inclusivity, but also reaffirm South Bend's commitment to holding the fundamental values of equality and respect for all individuals. Thank you for your attention to this matter. We look forward to a positive response from the city council and the opportunity to celebrate Pride Month together as a united community. Sincerely, Jovan Vaughn, Director of Willha Harbor Chamber of Commerce. So that's the letters, the correspondence that we have here, um. Unfortunately, we can't take action on this tonight. It needs to be on the agenda, which means it has to come up in two weeks' time. Um, we have to give opportunity for the public to know about this and to be able to weigh in on this. And it's, it's not on the agenda for tonight. Um, it could have been had we known about it prior, but it came in after the agenda was already published. Um, I have done some research on this, um, and one of the things that I took a look at was a Supreme Court case, Sherklup versus the city of Bos- is that the right? You might be saying that's wrong, Sherklup, I think it is, versus the city of Boston. And one of the things that the city who lost the case, uh, was recommended or advised to do was to have a flag policy in place before they allowed what they call third-party flags to be hung. South Bend does not have a flag policy in place. Uh, we checked in with the Municipal Research Services Center, M R S C, and again, they recommend that before a third-party flag be hung, that there is a flag policy in place in the jurisdiction that hangs the flag. So that is the first step that we need to take, is to create a flag policy. So that will be on the agenda, um, to discuss with the council at our next council meeting. And I recognize that it comes after the weekend when you wanted the flag displayed. And I had planned to call you tonight, Chad, and let you know that after the meeting, um, that that is the reasoning, that, that no decision will be made tonight, is for those reasons. And I hope you can understand that.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, but it will be on the agenda in two weeks at our next meeting, and it will be discussed at that point.
Okay, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, so moving on to the review of bids and awards, the Broadway Avenue Improvements and Overlay Project. Get all my papers in a row here. All right, so, um, the city of South Bend had a bid opening on May tenth for, um, the Broadway Avenue Improvements and Overlay Project. And the bids ranged from six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars to six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. The engineer's estimate was six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. So I would entertain a motion to approve the bid from the low bidder, Midway Underground LLC of Toledo, Washington, in the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Some move. Is there a second?
Still good.
Is there any discussion?
Have we worked with him thus far?
I've worked with him.
No, we haven't. Um, the engineers have a few times, um, sender, who helped it, they know their business, so.
Okay.
Their terms.
Right.
Same problems, they're all ones. I think they're more, more.
I missed that second, was that you, right?
Yeah, I was.
Yes.
Do we always have to take the lowest bid? Is that?
It's pretty standard.
Well, standard.
Unless, I think you do unless there is, I, I, I shouldn't talk, because I don't know what I'm talking about. Dennis, do you know more than I do?
If the city hasn't, if it's had past issues, push that with that contractor, then you can wait that.
Okay, but it's, since this is a new contractor, if it's, it's a done deal, if, if they're the lowest.
Well, that's the engineer's recommendation, I mean, they've, they've done all the background checks.
Yeah, they all know, yeah.
You know, um, there's no reason to, to not go down at this point. They have worked with them in the past, so.
Okay, still staying from that sinking, so, okay.
Yeah, that's a big issue. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Midway Underground has received the bid. Uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is our, it's to be moved to the second reading, to the second.
Bring it up.
No, I, that's fixed, that's approved, seven. Oh, seven is the one, okay, okay, this only took one, yeah, I wrote down too far, yeah. It's only one line in between six and seven, my eye went down too far. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to ordinance fifteen eighty-nine, which is an ordinance related to the uses and enjoyment of the city boat haven. Mooring of boats, oyster dredges, and other watercraft, providing for the manner of procuring leases for mooring and authorizing the city council and the city of South Bend to make all necessary regulations for the uses, occupation, and fixing the charges for the mooring of boats, oyster dredges, and other watercraft, and defining and providing penalties for the violations of this ordinance and further repealing ordinance number twelve thirty-five in its entirety. And within that document, um, there is an error, um, that was brought to our attention earlier today. In, um, section sixteen, um, it refers to the wrong ordinance that will be repealed. It says ordinance number eleven sixty-six, and it should naturally be ordinance number twelve thirty-five. Um, so there is one amendment to the document, it was missed in the initial go-through. Um, ordinance twelve thirty-five repealed eleven sixty-six, and so it was just missed, it didn't get changed out at this time. So, um, I think Chief Stegal is going to talk a little bit about this item.
Sure. Um, so, uh, Dennis and I have been looking at the docs stuff, and we realized that, uh, some of the, the mortgage rates, um, first off, they hadn't been, uh, raised since nineteen ninety-eight is what it looked like. So, um, it, it's, it's overdue for, uh, to raise those rates. And then, um, uh, we're gonna, I think we're gonna, um, redesign how the, there's, there's some space that, uh, wasn't being fully utilized down at the city dock at the commercial side, and, um, that's what got us looking at it and then realized that, well, we needed, we probably need to raise the rates. Um, I know that, uh, some of the, it hasn't been dredged, so that's, um, why the, the inside rate is a little cheaper, um, unless it, once it gets dredged, then the inside's gonna be, uh, the same rate as the outside. But I think that was the, the biggest.
Yeah, the, for the most part, that was it.
Um, yeah, it, it's been a while since this has been addressed, and I, I think that it does need to be updated, in the most part, along with a lot of our, until something's brought up, you know, realize that it's been out of date for so long.
Yeah, um, I know that Dee was here, um, she had mentioned updating this, and so it's probably a couple years ago anyways. Um, we should start looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll throw it out, we're just, but, so I think.
We have billing. We didn't have bills, and, um, I was looking at, starting to bill again since it's been completed, and then we like pulled it up and looked and realized it hasn't been addressed for so long, with copyright and lots of things, but maybe we need to address that and re-look at what, you know, the space, the rates, the everything, so.
So we started looking at the, what was it, in the new docs that we put in?
Yeah.
And the layout's a little bit, I mean, it's similar, but it's, it's a little bit different, so we wondered that and the shape of it.
So when will the dredging be finished?
Patricia had her hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
Um, I think I read somewhere in there where there's no swimming or diving or something off of the dock. Isn't that in there? And I see people have, take, take their kids and they have a little picnic down on the dock and they, they swim off the dock.
Yeah, we actually have ladders that go.
Well, I know that.
Yeah.
Well, this is the commercial side, so there's no access to it unless you have.
Yeah, that's right, the rec side, this is.
This is the, this is the recreational side, this is only the commercial side.
That's behind the lock gate.
Okay.
The, the whole portion that didn't get fixed and updated.
Yeah, because people don't want fun down.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Bunny?
No, I was just asking, you were talking about dredging, is that something that's in the plan, the dredging behind the docks, or?
Yeah.
Um, I had been in contact with Jim Stace from the board, and, and there's a, a ton of committee that has to be done.
Yeah, the pretty much.
So, I told him that we're interested, um, in getting that portion dredged, because he was looking at doing some other parts within Willha.
Okay.
And, um, he said it's a, it's a couple-year process last night, well, I haven't talked to him. But we're on the docket with him.
That's good.
What it sounds like, so.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to move ordinance fifteen eighty-nine to the second reading.
Some move.
Second, in further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we go into the second reading. Um, Labor Day Beer Garden, it is customary each year that, um, we have to pass a, um, a, whatever you call it, an ordinance, not an ordinance, it's just we have to approve, approve the Labor Day Beer Garden down at Cheney Park. And so I would entertain a motion to approve that it happens over Labor Day weekend.
Some move.
Sir.
Any discussion?
Still some people putting on, pitching.
Yes, I do believe so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to Department head reports, please, Chief Stegal.
Yeah, after fumbling through the doc order and saying, I'm not saying it, I, I have nothing to.
All right, Supervisor Hough.
I'll just tell him, so like he's talking.
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, for Treasure Sol.
Um, just to kind of touch on, um, Lisa's letter that I just, again, wanna, um, address that Lisa has worked, because it's on the first, kind of first, third basis, too, with this funding. So she is like right on top of it and really working hard to get us this money back, which I really appreciate, being that we can always use your money. So, um, she's really been on top of it, and I do appreciate her work, um, so I just wanted to address that, and I have nothing.
All right, and, um, I don't have anything other than between now and our next meeting. I'll be at the A W C Annual Convention in Spokane for a few days, so that'll be fun. Um, that's the only thing I have. Um, were there any public comments regarding, um, the, um, review of bids and awards for Broadway Avenue or the boat ordinance, um?
Correspondence.
Yes, uh, I can't hear you, Craig, Craig's written it.
Can you hear me?
Still muted.
He's working on it.
Yeah, that's.
There, we got you.
Now you have me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I just wanted to speak up in support of flying the pride flag. Um, it, it's a little, little hard, it was seventy-nine that this happened, that nobody's bothered to put a flag ordinance in place. When I first moved here, pre-COVID days, one of the first things I did was offer to broadcast the city council meetings, and the response I always met with was, why would we want to do that? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to make believe that I'm gonna speak for anybody in the LGBTQ-plus community. I have enough trouble dealing with my own community. Um, but when I show support for them on social media, it's reached the point now where I'm gonna be contacting legal advice regarding, I'm starting to feel somewhat threatened even. Not, not that I'm actually feeling threatened, but that the messages coming to me are intended in this day and age to be a threat. So I'd ask you to consider that, what does it show when you're not supporting your community by flying these? Who is it that you're supporting by not including everybody in your community? And it's getting a little harder and harder to believe that the people are really being included by the people who have been elected to office. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we on to. Okay, um so we want the council comments, um Counsel Davis.
Can I? Can I speak as well?
Uh, sure, go ahead, who are we, who are you?
Stephanie Serrano in South Bend here.
Oh, okay.
I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to say, if Raymond can fly a pride flag without a lot of back issues, why can't we? Why is this such an issue? It's, it means so much to our L G B T Q youth here in South Bend, a very isolated community, to know that all community members support. I don't understand how Raymond, just four miles away, can fly this flag, and we can't.
I don't know if Raymond has a flag policy or not. Um, I know that we are doing what is um legally responsible. Um, if we fly a flag, they're called third-party flags, and if we fly one, we have to fly all if we don't have a flag policy. And um so that's, that's the reason, but I'm not gonna get into it. We're gonna discuss it in more depth in two weeks at our next meeting. Uh, I encourage you to come and um be a part of that, so.
Thank you, I'll be happy.
If you wanna come to the office and talk to me or call me on the phone, I'm more than happy to talk to you. Um, but right now, this isn't a forum for that, we're gonna hear it in two weeks, so.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Alright, council comments, Counsel Davis, I think I called on, yes. I'm not sure if she's there. I think she just left it on.
Yeah.
She had a thing to go to for her granddaughter tonight. Um, Counsel Williams.
Counsel Williams.
Alright, and Counsel Corcoran.
I love our small town, I do. Been away for just a week, but I just couldn't wait to go back. I really, really love this place, I love all the people that work so hard, and I'm very appreciative of um the the work that everybody does. So thank you, all, one and all.
Counsel Ramon.
Um, nothing, just a another thank you to Lucas for that, Lisa, I'm very glad. Very well done.
Yes, we're completely wrong.
Counsel Pyron.
I was very interested in the library, that was great, and thank you guys for voicing out. You know, things don't change unless people talk, and you know, we appreciate you guys' input, but just please bear in mind that it's worth trying to do best interest of the city and look out for legal actions as well.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, do we have any future agenda topics other than the pride flag for next week, or next two? Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you to everyone who came tonight, we really appreciate it. Yes.
Yes, require. That's an admission.
Okay.